It's recording.
Okay, all right. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Planning Commission meeting. We're gonna start off with we call it the order. If I could, Justin, could I get you go ahead and take a attendance roll to see who else?
Yes, sir. Wendell Miller. Don Jackamore.
Here.
Cheryl Monphy.
Present.
Justin Cothran, present. Luke Duffield.
Here.
Shirley Hatley. John Cho. John Cho. Larry Smith.
Here.
Cody Black.
Here.
Justin Keller. Cho and Hatley should be missing, Mr. Chairman, but we have a court.
Ms. Hatley just joined.
Oh, there she is.
I'm here.
All right. So the only one missing is John Cho then.
Yes, and Mr. Keller.
And Miss, okay. All right. Okay. Okay, the I guess the first order of business here, well, it's got, well, we usually do the minutes first. I don't guess it matters really, but we do have a Board of Adjustment member to appoint. And I know that an email went out saying that it was going to be help me, Sarah, what was his name? The gentleman's name that was on the email that
Great question.
Okay.
Harold Cornet.
Right, okay. Now Harold Cornet is not going to be joining us after all, and but we we are gonna be we do have Blake Tarpley, who six years ago, when I first came on, he was the chairman of the Board of Adjustment back then. So he's, you know, he's he's done this before and and has told the mayor that he'd be glad to help, you know, come back and help us out. So anyway, I'll entertain a motion to to appoint Blake Tarpley to the Board of Adjustment.
I'll make that motion. This is Luke.
Okay. Commissioner Duffield has made a motion to appoint Blake Tarpley as the as one of the at-large members of the Board of Adjustment. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Smith has seconded that. All those in favor of this appointment, they acknowledge by saying aye.
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 Opposed, yes? Okay, Justin, go ahead and get us a head count if you would.
Don Jackamore.
Yes.
Cheryl Monphy.
Yes.
Shirley Hatley.
Yes.
Cothran, yes. Luke Duffield.
Yes.
Larry Smith.
Yes.
Cody Black.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next, next item here is the minutes from the January meeting. Have everybody had a chance to look those up? Is there any any corrections? Anything needs to be made to those? If not, what's your pleasure, gentlemen, ladies?
I make a motion that we approve the January minutes.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Hatley to approve January's minutes. Do I hear a second?
This is Don, I'll second it.
Okay, Commissioner Jackamore seconded that. All those in favor acknowledge by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion should carry. Go ahead and get us a roll call on that, Justin, if you would.
Jackamore.
Yes.
Monphy.
Yes.
Hatley.
Yes.
Cothran, yes. Duffield.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Passes.
Okay. Okay, all right. The next item. We have a we have an application for, these are new items here, a special use permit to allow operation of a carpentry, custom woodworking, or factory-making business in a C2 located at 2515 East Second Street. And that's submitted by Pecos Farmhouse on behalf of Creasel Properties. Sarah, you have a staff report on that for us?
Yes, sir, absolutely. So as stated, this is a request to allow operation of a custom work woodworking operation located at 2515 East Second Street. As you go through special use permits, supposed to give special consideration as certain uses may or may not be appropriate. With this, the building is already in existence. The facade of the structure meets commercial building design on the side facing Second Street, which is the side where this business is being proposed. There is no discernible public benefit by requiring any additional updates to the structure. This is just a tenant in an existing facility. Because it is just a tenant within an existing facility, there is not any special condition that staff feels like they need to provide. They will need to go through additional permitting for a sign permit, as that will be required in addition to a business license. And if they need to store any building materials outside of the confines of the building, that they would need to screen that from view. Otherwise, staff recommends forwarding this application to city council. With the condition, I did forget to mention that a parking plan will need to be submitted, ensuring that there is one, at least one ADA van accessible parking space provided as no spaces on the site currently provide ADA parking. No storage of materials outside of the commercial structure and a separate sign permit shall be required. As a result of the findings that this is a proposal for a new use permitted by special use within existing building, building and use is compatible with other uses and structures in the area. Current traffic routes are constructed in such a way to handle traffic from the business and public facilities already service the location. And that is my staff report.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Or is there anybody on, is there anybody on here on behalf of the, from Pecos Farmhouse or Creasel Properties? Anybody with us tonight? That has any comments or any questions about that? Commissioners, do you have, do you have any questions for Sarah? In regards to this this request?
This is Cody. I would move to approve the application as presented.
Okay, Commissioner Black has moved to approve the special use permit request. Do I hear a second?
This is Luke, I'll second it.
Okay. Commissioner Duffield has seconded that. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of this special use permit application, acknowledge by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Not hearing none, the motion should carry. Justin, go ahead and get us a roll call, please.
Jackamore.
Yes.
Monphy.
Yes.
Hatley.
Yes.
Cothran, yes. Duffield.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Carries, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Next item, we have a request for a special use permit to allow operation of a storage building, container sale, or rental business located at 1610 South Arkansas Avenue, submitted by William Thornsberry. Sarah, you have a staff report on that one?
Yes, sir. So this is a request to allow operation of a storage building or sale or rental operation at the corner of 16th and Arkansas there at Funky Town Mall. As you'll note, the commercial structure already located there does meet commercial building design. They are actually asking to locate approximately 44 storage buildings on the property between where Funky Town Mall is and 16th Street there. Kind of in an organized fashion so that you could walk through. As many of you know, Funky Town Mall has plenty of parking. There are ADA accessible parking spaces. It is a fully paved parking lot. The office for this business will actually be within one of the units at Funky Town Mall. And there have been comments from City Core and Public Works Engineering regarding location of any of those storage units should not be placed over the existing sewer line that crosses the property. The site plan does note where the sewer line is and the unit should not be placed over in that area. The applicant has also been notified that the grading and drainage permit is required for any improvements of the lot. And has been working with some of the has been in contact with engineering. I don't know if all of the permits have been obtained at this point, but I know that they are working on that. And they need to make sure that all of the storage units are placed in such a way that they do not obstruct the drainage easement or area for this flow through the property and that they allow adequate space from the top of the bank back onto the property, allowing sufficient area for maintenance and access to that drainage. They may need to mitigate for additional runoff as a result of the gravel and the rooftops placed on the property. As a result, staff recommends forwarding this application to city council for approval of this special use permit with the following conditions. Tiny home shall not be smaller than 500 square feet. I did forget to mention that we have language in the zoning code that limits that requires single-family units to be a minimum size of 500 square feet. Since his application indicated that they may be selling tiny homes on the property, wanted to make sure that they were not selling tiny homes that would not be permitted in Russellville. Grading and drainage ordinances shall be met. No structures permitted in the area of the drainage without approval for the city engineer. A separate sign permit will be required and no storage building shall be placed within the existing sewer line easement that crosses the property. And this is a result of the findings that the proposal for a new use permitted by special permit located on previously developed property. The building and use is compatible with other uses and structures in the area. Current traffic routes are constructed in such a way to handle the traffic and public facilities already service this location. And that is my staff report.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Is Mr. Thornsberry on with us tonight? Or anybody representing him? Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Sarah? Regarding this?
This, this, Don, I've got a I drove by there and there's already a bunch of those little storage units out there.
Yes, sir.
How was that able without being approved?
The applicant had reached out to the mayor because of significant cost when he was told to vacate property where he was existing and had to relocate. So we were asked to provide a temporary license. If this does not get approved and issued, then he would have to vacate that property as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I had the same question because I drove by there. And I saw about 20, 25 buildings already out there. So I'm thinking, okay, is this just an afterthought or what?
No, sir.
Not only that, sir, this is, is, what's the distance there? They looked a little close to the road. I didn't put a tape on it, but I would say they were within six feet.
They should be meeting site area setback requirements on that, which that's the side street. So it would be 15 feet. And we will have to double check on that. Unfortunately, I have not driven by since any of the structures have been placed.
Sarah?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to tell the planning commission the allowance of the temporary permit to put storage units, you know, that shouldn't affect your decision one way or the other. This again, as Sarah indicated was he was in a crunch in relation to getting off his current property until we we allowed him to set up there just temporarily until you guys could get the case. But I just want to let you know, I would just make a statement that it shouldn't affect your decision of the fact that we gave him a temporary allowance for putting the storage units on that property.
I don't, I don't have any issue with that. And and Mayor and Sarah, you know, I applaud both of y'all for for kind of reaching out and making something like this happen. I think that's proactive and and shows good faith to people wanting to do business in Russellville that that, you know, we can make something happen if you put yourself in or for no fault of your own, if you end up in some type of a situation where you need something to to do it quickly. I did have, just procedurally, you know, we're listing the lease agreement, but they're not obligated to actually show the amount that the you know, an agreement's there because this is showing their you know, their actual dollar amount. But I mean, they're not required as part of our
No, sir. They were not required to submit that. They offered to include that as part of their application. But no, sir, it's not.
Okay. With that, I'll move that it be approved.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Duffield has moved to approve the request for a special use permit.
Mr. Miller, Luke, is that as presented by staff with the conditions or just as applied for?
With staff as condition, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. We have a motion to have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. All right, that's Commissioner Monphy. Welcome aboard, by the way. And good to have you with us.
Thank you.
We have a second, but Mr. Monphy, and and we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, acknowledge by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion should carry. Justin, get us a roll call, please.
Jackamore.
Yes.
Monphy.
Yes.
Hatley.
Yes.
Cothran, yes. Duffield.
Yes.
Cho. Cho decided he had got on. John Cho. Larry Smith.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. All right. All right, the next, the next item here is we have a request to rezone property from a C2 to an R3 located at 416 East Third Street, submitted by Chuck Frankhouse. Sarah, you want to give us a staff report on that?
Yes, sir, absolutely. So this is an application to update the zoning code from C2 to R3. And when considering a zone map adjustment, careful consideration needs to be made in regard to the future and current land use of the area, the comprehensive plan recommendations, and the value or income potential of the property. So first, considering future and current land uses. Right now, we see a mixture of commercial and residential uses and recognize that over time, a lot of this area will transition to predominantly commercial areas as shown by the businesses that are operating within historically residential structures. Allowing this area to be rezoned actually just extends the R3 zoning that is directly across the street from this property to the north and bringing it further south across to encompass this property. This application therefore would not create what is called spot zoning in the traditional sense because the definition of spot zoning is the process of singling out a small parcel of land for a use classification totally different from that of the surrounding area for the benefit of the owner of such property. And because this is an extension of the zone from the north to the south, we're not creating a park, a pocket of R3 property within or surrounded by C2. I do want to provide a little bit of an update. As you know, this application was brought forward in a different fashion at the December meeting and staff notified you that there, as part of that special use permit application that was withdrawn, there were 23 code violations at that time. And as the date of the staff report on February 1st, all but four of those violations have been corrected. There were seven new violations that were noted and the known owner was notified. I also want to provide you an update. I don't know if you looked at the file today, but we were provided a petition by residents. Seventeen people signed in opposition to the zone change. And they also provided nine incident reports from the Russellville Police Department of events that have occurred at that property since April of 2020. That is just an update for your information. As we continue on what we can consider comprehensive plan recommendations, the comp plan is always used as a guide when considering zone changes. This is classified as inner office city, which is described to include single and multi-story buildings accommodating a mixture of uses inside individual structures and should have shared parking. With this in mind, it is possible to consider that the R3 zoning classification be allowed. The last thing that staff is to consider is the value or income potential of the property. And staff cannot find that this application is made solely on the basis that there is a desire to increase the value of income potential of the property. So as a result, staff finds no legal reason why the commission could not forward this application to the city council for the approval of the request to rezone the property from C2 Highway Commercial to R3 Medium High Density Residential. As a result of the findings that it is in line with future existing and future land uses within the area, the proposal mostly aligns with the reimagined Russellville 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and there does not seem to be an increase of value or income potential of the property. And that is my staff report.
Sarah, I have, I do have a question. You said all but four code violations were corrected. What, what core violations are still not been, have not been taken care of? Do you have that listed?
I do not have that listed, but I do have that. Just give me one second. And that's the wrong one. I don't have the four that were outstanding. I just have the seven new violations that were found, which are GF, GIF receptacles and bathroom vent fan needs to replace lavatory and a bathroom. Bathroom windows need to be fixed. Water heater needs to be replaced and all electrical outlets need new covers on them. But I don't have the four that are outstanding. I do believe one has to do with plumbing underneath the structure.
All right. We've got a lot of people online to, or on the call tonight that is Mr. Frank, Ms. Frank House, I see you're on with us tonight. Do you have anything to yelp, Tommy?
All I have to say is, I mean, we've been running the rooming house there for for the last 20 years and we've been paying, you know, been getting business licenses every year and nobody knew that we didn't have the proper zoning for the last 20 years. And James Duval ran it for 12 years before that. And we don't know how long, it might have been another 20, 30, 40 years before that, it's been run as a rooming house there in town. But like I said, nobody has ever known that it wasn't you know, just until recently that it didn't have the right, the proper zoning requirement. So, and so when Sarah brought that up to us, we had to go ahead and reapply to have it, you know, properly zoned.
All right. We've got, we've got some people on here tonight. So just who is, does anybody have any comment or any question on this? This is a public meeting, so. Miss Warren, okay, Dana?
Hi, I'm just from a business owner that's across the street. The things that we are experiencing with the group home is the the parking issues. I'm not sure that corner can handle any more parking. I mean, I know you've realized they've cut the city curb to allow more of their residents to pull up into the front yard and park on the dirt without any skirt or pavement. The problem I'm running into is when parents come to drop off their children to the childcare facility, the you know, group homes typically are transitional place for people to get on their feet. And so within the eyesight of the children are usually gentlemen with no shirts and their, their bottom crack showing. And they do have, you know, a lot of profanity and yelling that go on. And I would say, not on a daily basis, but on a weekly basis, my parents complain and I feel like that, you know, we've lost patrons because they walk across our parking lot to get to an area by the train track. The residents there, sometimes they block the road because of the parking. You know, before the Frank House bought the home, there wasn't that many residents that lived there. So my concern would just be the number of residents that would increase. And could that that corner handle the additional cars that are going in and out of there? I guess that that would be what I have for right now.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Dana. Is there anybody else that has any comment or any questions for Sarah or Commissioners? Do you have any comment?
Wendell, there are others online who wish to speak. And I will try going through and calling names or phone numbers to make sure that we give everyone an opportunity. And so I have a Malera on the line.
Malera?
And Tanya Malcolm. How about Abby Mallett?
Ma'am, I'm here.
Yes, ma'am. Did you wish to speak?
I don't know if you guys can hear me.
Yes.
Just was agreeing with Ms. Wendell. Who all do we have?
Yeah, Abby, did you have a comment about the Frank House request?
Sorry.
Ms. Mallett, can you hear me?
Sir, I just share the same opinions with Ms. Wendell just about the I'm sorry, I guess you guys can't.
Miss?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
You're cutting out a little bit.
I was talking, but I guess it wasn't, sure. Okay. We'll just try it. I was just sharing the same ideas as Ms. Wendell about the same, the parking, there street on the opposite corner and it shut down to a small amount of parking that people are constantly walking and that's fine. It's a call about a child that just was being neglected. Quality. How would be changed is kind of what worries us. So.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Mallett.
Craig Cloud, did you have some comments?
No, ma'am, I do not.
Okay, thank you. I have a phone number ending in 5683. Did you wish to speak? And then how about a phone number ending in 8610? Is that Carla Alverson? And you are muted if you could unmute yourself. Carla, can you hear us? Can you unmute yourself if you wish to speak? Carla, can you hear us? Can you unmute yourself if you wish to speak? Wendell, I do know that she called in wishing to speak about the application. I do not know what her concerns or comments were. I'm not sure if
Okay. While we're trying to get back with her, I do have a question for for Dana Warren. As far as the police, has there been has there been any contact with the police at all? In your of your knowledge?
Yes, we've had to contact the police because a man was dragging a woman across the yard by their hair. We've made a call because of the yelling and the profanity, the smell of marijuana in the air. Pit bulls, we've had to call about those. And then the indecent exposure. And then at one time we had to lock down because the R P D asked us to lock down because they had to do a raid. And an officer, one of my parents actually witnessed an officer chasing a gentleman from that house down the road with a handgun. And so I just, that's the kind of situations I'm negotiating with my business.
Okay, I appreciate it. Didn't mean to put you on the spot there, Dana. I figured you could give us some give us some firsthand intel on that one. So but anyway, commissioners.
Sarah, I have a question on it. Just.
Identify yourself, sir, if you would. Who's speaking?
This is Luke.
Oh, okay.
A question on this, if they're adding parking. Is is it up to code the way that it's setting right now, even as residential?
Is the parking that they currently have up to code?
Yes.
No.
Because that that wasn't mentioned in the or was that mentioned in your report as well?
Typically, on rezoning applications, they do not implicate development requirements. Rezoning is just if you're changing from one zone to the next. When he comes in to actually get his business license on this, if this is approved, he's going to have to do some development on that property for parking to provide enough parking for the I know there's ten, at least ten units in there. And so that has a certain requirement of parking. You have to provide two parking spaces per unit. But rezoning applications do not implicate development requirements.
So with this many people living in this structure, does that fall under being sprinkled or anything like that from fire?
Luke, this is Richard. That those homes like that are typically, it's it's an evolving process over many years. It was probably many years ago, a large family home. And it got bought and sold. And ultimately, it turned into what he's calling a boarding house. That thing doesn't come close to meeting the current life safety code. However, there's nothing that allows us to retroactively really enforce any things like sprinkling. But you're correct. Today, if Mr. Frank Castle is going to build that, that would be a fully sprinkler building. It would look completely different.
Well, my guess, my question, and I understand where you're coming from on it. But if this has been operated in a commercial zone, if we are going to approve that it goes to residential for a new zoning, is that going to kick in the new regulations for the structure? And I'm asking this more for Mr. Frank Houses because if you if this switches over to that, is this going to open up a lot more expense to put it into residential zoning now that maybe you haven't thought of? Because if all these if all these issues have to be brought up to code, once you bring it into a if you go to the the residential side with the structure, I would want to put that out before we go on with this. Is am I am I thinking right on that?
Well, you're close. There are differences between a residential zoning and a residential use. In other words, if it's a single-family home or duplex or multi-family, it can be a what we would call in the fire code or building code residential use. And it could possibly be the same thing in zoning. However, you can have a hotel that we would consider in the code as an R use like residential. But in a zoning, it could be commercial. So there are some differences. Now, if he changes the if the zoning gets changing, it doesn't necessarily affect the use because the use has been called multi-family. One of the reasons that got tabled a while back because he wanted to call it a homeless shelter or even a group home. It's not a group home. Group homes have custodial care and shelters or home group shelters are typically nonprofit a centralized management system and they're different. So that's one of the reasons it got tabled because there were clear inconsistencies between what he wanted to name it as a use and what ultimately it was going to get zoned. So now that it is just the use is staying the same, it's very difficult to go back and retroactively upgrade the up to code. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think I'm following. I just I wanted to make sure that you know, Mr. Frank House, if 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 this was going to trigger a new set of of regulations by moving this to the to what he's requesting to change the zoning on, that be aware of the possible money that that's going to take to bring it up to standards.
Yeah.
Isn't this a requirement since it's not, I mean, it's not up to code or it has it's not it doesn't have the proper zoning code? Isn't that the reason it's been brought been brought to us?
It has been brought to you because it is not in the correct zone. Yes, ma'am. As a result that he let his business license lapse. And so he is coming to apply for a license after it had been expired for ten months. And so as we started looking at things, that's when we noticed that it's not zoned correctly. And in order to issue licenses, we need to make sure that we're in the correct zone for this. So that is why it's being brought to you. It does have to meet certain code requirements. Thus, our code enforcement has been out there pretty regularly enforcing things that have to be done in order to meet certain requirements that have to be kept up with property maintenance codes including interior, exterior requirements. Thus, the code enforcement, we had twenty-three issues. Now we're down to four of those original twenty-three plus seven new ones. But from zoning's perspective, the zone change would allow him to operate and get his building permit. He would have to do some parking lot revisions so that he has enough parking for his structure. But he is working on a plan to get that taken care of.
One more thing I might throw out there, Luke, for clarification is the word code. Code gets thrown around a little bit and it's sometimes often misunderstood. There is a code that applies to the fire and building code, which is a state requirement. There is code that where we're talking about zoning, which are local. The local legislative body sets those. And then you got code enforcement, which may which is going to enforce your local zoning codes. So if I get involved, it's going to be where the where 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 a change of use, the occupancy change would in effect trigger a state code, a state violation. And what Sarah is mostly talking about zoning, those are local. Those are at the local level. Now, he does need to, when we say fix things, if your plugin is if your plugins are not up to code or they don't have covers, you're you are not in compliance with the existing state code that you should have been all along. But when we're talking about codes, remember that it's very difficult in in an existing building to force them to upgrade state codes. And that's where I think the confusion is.
Yeah, my my question with that is that if it's if it's if it's being rezoned, then it's going to be looked at as a almost as a new license? Is that how that works if it has been improperly, I guess, looked at over a period of time? Does that trigger a different way of looking at that is my question?
If he if he would have submitted like he did the first month for a group home or a group shelter, I think that I think we would have to look at it. That would have been a change of use. But since it's been multi-family, I guess he's called it multi-family or boarding. That's that's a that's a loophole that makes it difficult for us to require state compliant upgrades.
Is this rented by the month?
Are you talking to me?
Yes, sir. Uh huh.
It is rented. Some people pay by the month, people who and some people pay by the week. All utilities and cable TV and all that are all included in one payment. So it makes it very simple for people to pay their bills.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Sarah, is there anybody else? Has any?
I think Ms. Carla Alverson was able to unmute herself. Did you want to speak regarding this application, Ms. Alverson?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
My concern is the traffic we have in and out of there. And meaning the tenants. And we provided police reports. And those were only a few police reports. But when you're living in this neighborhood, I mean, the people that are attracted to renting this type of place, it is very difficult for safety. And you have a daycare across the street. And you have an apartment complex for elderly people. So safety is my concern for everyone else. Not necessarily the people living in this place that is not up to code, but for the people around this place.
Can can I mention something?
Yes.
Okay, if we have an incident with police with tenants in the building, they are removed from the building. We do not allow them to stay. They are gone. I mean, unequivocally, no excuses allowed. They are gone.
That that is not true. I have called the police on one tenant of yours several times, even for threatening me. And he continued to live there for a very long time. So it's very concerning.
Okay, all right.
No, I do not know his name.
Okay, because I doubt he's there now anymore.
Let me interrupt for just a second. Okay, I don't. We don't need to be going back and forth. We've opened it up for comments, not for not for arguing or not for and and I appreciate, you know, your feelings on this, both of you, but this is not the place for that. I do appreciate both of your comments. Is Sarah, is there anybody else that has any comments that that need to be heard before we move on this?
I believe everyone has been given an opportunity to speak. There are a couple people who are still on the call. A Malera, a Tanya Malcolm, or a Craig, I mean, Craig said he did not have anything to speak on. But other than that, everyone has been given an opportunity.
Okay.
This is Don. I want to add something to that. This is not really policing and code enforcement is not up to really the planning commission. We're just going over, just taking it from a C two to R three. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Dana?
I just want to reiterate that taking it from a C two to an R three will allow more families to live there. And and which has presented a problem currently. And I just wanted to reemphasize that.
All right. Okay, because if there's no other comments, commissioners, do you have any questions for Sarah? Or do you have any questions for the applicant at all or any any comments at all?
Sarah, is is this a spot zoning issue?
Unfortunately, it is not because R three is located on the property to the north across the street from this. It is just extending zoning from the north to encompass this property.
Well, Sarah, this Larry Smith. In light of what I've heard tonight, I feel sorry for these people that live around this place. And in light of what I've heard, I don't know how how you can, I don't even know why it operates. Why is it not have a license?
Mr. Smith, the license, I don't know why it was originally issued. I don't know if the zoning, when it originally started, was not enforced. However, when he allowed his business license to expire and then have to come in and reapply for a license, that is when all of this was brought to light. And therefore, going through this process, rezoning the property is the only way to potentially allow this business to remain in operation at that location.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
In light of what I've heard tonight, I'm going to move that we decline this application.
Okay, Commissioner Smith has made a motion to 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 reject the application or the the rezoning application to from C two to R three. Do I hear a second on this?
This is Don. I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to to reject the rezoning request. And is there any other discussion or any anything else? No amendments to that? All those in favor of this of rejecting this request acknowledged by saying aye? Any opposed? Oh, Luke. Okay, all right. If you would, Justin, go ahead and get us a roll call on that.
Hi, Chairman. This is Cody. I'm going to oppose the motion as well.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. Justin, it sounded like we got two opposed there. But if you would, go ahead and get us a roll call on that.
Jackamore?
Yes.
Monphy?
Aye.
Hatley?
I have opposed the request. The rezoning.
So you approved the motion? You approved your the motion was to decline, to reject the request.
Okay, that's a yes.
Okay.
Catherine? No. Duffield?
No.
Cho?
I need to stay. We had trouble getting connected. I missed the whole front end of it.
Okay. Smith?
Yes.
Black?
No.
Four, three passes.
Okay. All right. Um, Sarah? This, well, that passes then. So that's our last order of business. Sarah, if you would, uh, would, if you would update the commission on the, uh, on the governor of his, uh, mandate and what are possible meeting?
Yes, sir. I, I have heard rumors that the governor does not intend to extend the, um, provision that allows these, um, virtual meetings. Uh, since our meeting is March 4th next month, it, um, we will keep you informed of any updates or changes. But as of right now, we may need to continue, or may need to have our planning commission board adjustment meeting for March in person. Uh, that would be held at city council chambers. I do not anticipate hearing anything in towards, until towards the end of February because the current provision is through the end of this month. Uh, so I will keep you informed, but we may need to just plan on attending an in-person meeting for March.
All right. Do that and just let us know when you hear something different. So, um, um, if, if it's, I mean, we're going to go ahead and just leave it scheduled like it is until we hear something different, I guess, right? So, all right. Well, guys, if there's no other, there are no other business, then, uh, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.